Katherine, Azanu, Lucy, Melissa. They're all in.
Yeah, it's fine.
Not sure what's going on.
Okay, yeah, come down. Yep. Um, can you hear me?
We can hear you Karen.
Katherine.
Yes.
When you, hi, sorry. So I don't know why there's technical difficulties. How did you get into the meeting? I, I went and put the, the agendas on this morning. I can get them on when I go to the Ashford website and I see them under Board of Selectmen, but Bill and Christine don't.
Um, I had to download it.
Cause. But did you go to meetings and agendas?
Sorry.
Did you go to meetings and agendas again and?
Oh yes, I went there. It was there. I had no problem.
Hello?
Um, what I did do was download it. Cynthia, how did you get in?
They got in through the website.
Bill sent the link this morning.
Oh, Chris, Cindy Ford said she got it through the link. Uh, Bill sent the link.
He sent, he sent, uh, he sent the agenda out this morning to the team.
And Sherry's shaking her head too.
Yes, I did.
Through the website. Yeah, and I just copied, I just copied and pasted the, the link into the web browser.
So I always go to the website because then I can have the same experience that anybody else that wants to join our meeting from outside has. So that's how I did it.
The link again?
Alright, yep.
Bill?
Hello?
When, when you went to the website, did it, uh, you couldn't, when you clicked on the link in the document, it didn't work for you. Is that correct?
Correct.
So what you would need to do is just download the document. Uh, which is what it gave me as an option. And then I could click on it.
Cause what I did was I went in and we're, we're mics. Where you guys put it in for us last week. It's there, but when I punch on it, nothing would happen. And then I guess Karen tried to re-enter it.
I put it in the.
You're on mine or on, on Chris's computers.
Oh, Bill, I've just resent the link to both you and Chris to your emails.
Okay. So again, I got, I was able to go in through the website.
That's I, that's how I just got in on the website. It, I went in and posted.
Yeah, it's the most important way to get it right, you know, um, place to get it right so that everybody can get there.
Okay. Well, let me go down and try it one more time.
Okay.
I'll be back here with Melissa.
Hey Bill, you gotta download the, um, you have to download the document in order to click on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, I'm gonna log off then. I'm gonna go on the website and delete the two that Mike D'Amato put on. Because we don't need those. And, uh, and.
Are you sure?
Yeah, because I, if you go to the town website, I don't know if you can do it right now, but.
Yeah, I can.
And go to agendas in minutes.
Yes, um.
And then go down to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, and it says Board of Selectmen Special Meeting. Okay, I, if I click on that.
Right, there's a little PDF picture right next to it?
Uh, no, I don't see a PDF picture. What I see is this thing is in red with a hot link. And then what it does is it comes up in my little list of downloads. Anytime I go out there, it, it shows downloads. So, uh, I just went into the download. And when I went to use it, uh, it, it says a protected view. So I just did enable editing because I couldn't get into it from there. And in the, uh, enable, eh, enable editing, I was able to do the control.
Eh.
Uh, click on it.
So, but you saw it under the title oh seven seventeen twenty twenty-three B O S Special Meeting Agenda?
Yes, um.
Okay, that's what I just put in.
Okay. Alright, well.
Well, I think we're all here. Most of us are here.
Okay, then I'm gonna log off.
Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you.
You're welcome to join us Karen if you'd like.
Uh, what's it in, what's it about?
The after-school program.
Oh, sure, I'll listen.
That I know you're very familiar with. For those of you who may not know it. Um, Karen was instrumental when the original after-school program was implemented by Eastcon, is that correct?
Um, the second time around. So when my kids were younger, I contacted, um, the Y and, um.
Okay.
Was able to work it through them. I did a survey to everybody and I coordinated everything and, and got it up and going for when my kids were still there.
Okay.
Do we have Roger for this meeting, Bill?
I thought we did, but he's not here and I haven't heard from him.
Okay, so, um, I think it's probably time to call the meeting to order.
Um, I've got a eleven forty-six.
Yep.
And I will call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order, uh, President Catherine Silver Smith and myself and our guest. Um, I think what we wanted to do is just follow up on our last week's meeting and kinda let you know where we are from here. Um, and I, I think the intent is to continue, um, on a weekly basis until we're. We're all satisfied, everything, all the bases have been touched.
Actually, Bill, we have a, we have a really tight timeline because, um, we, we need to get this into the Ashford Citizen for the August issue. And I, I think what's gonna happen is we're missing, we're gonna miss that deadline. And that's to make sure parents are aware that it's going to start September first and what they need to do. So, um, I'm not sure how we're gonna do the best job of getting the word out other than through the school. Um, whatever mechanism the school may have. But the, the reality is, is that if we were gonna put it in the Citizen as an advertisement, I think we've missed that window.
Um, I had a brief talk with the editor this morning on her way out and gave her heads up that it's. Hopefully, we're gonna have something for her by the twentieth, uh, to put in. I think one of the things I wanted to discuss was, and I, I know Cindy, you would. Indicated, I guess you put in through one of your sources, the lead position. Um, advertisement, is that correct?
Correct.
Um.
The one that we have documented?
I don't know if you've had a chance to read that. It was in a, one of our emails, Catherine.
Yes, I've read them. I've actually read them all and I read all of the, um, other information that was provided. But what we don't have in this lead supervisor position is we don't have anything about the qualifications. We also don't have anything about the role that that person would play in the, uh, assessing the performance of the other, uh, employees working the program.
Catherine, did you get the one I sent this morning?
I don't think she did.
This morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cindy did one this morning and I, I don't know where you.
I thought you weren't gonna be, yeah, I thought I saw somebody said you weren't gonna be ready because you thought it was a different day. So give me just a second, okay?
I wasn't ready with the policies and procedures.
Okay.
Cause I let everyone know that I would work on that booklet, but. I was partially on vacation last week, so.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm amazed that you were able to do it. Okay, so it came at eleven thirty-eight. So let me just take a look.
Cindy, the only thing I noticed on there, and I think we have to make sure we add, is that we're an equal opportunity employer. Probably somewhere down the bottom.
Okay, just give me a second here, please.
Other than that, I was, I was comfortable with the, uh, with the ad.
Okay, if you'll just, just give me a second. I'm printing it off so I can actually read it and write on it. I'm sorry, it came out at what, eleven thirty-six?
No, it was, uh, around eleven.
No, I have eleven thirty-eight. Okay, so that's why I didn't see it. There must be a delay.
Possibly. Eleven sixteen at left mic box.
Thank you for putting knowledge, skills and abilities there. Qualifications profile. Okay, um, we, we still don't have, I think, is we don't have what that person's role is in. Um. Uh, assessing the performance of the other people in the program.
Uh, if you go down, it says, um. Ability to engage, uh, ability to communicate. Hang on.
I've seen that. I see that.
Um.
Oral or written communications, presentation reports, memoranda, letters, grant proposals, curriculum documents, work slots, workshops and evaluations. So is that staff evaluations and evaluations of the program?
Community.
That's, uh, the one, two, three, four, five, six. Six bullet down under knowledge, skills and abilities, Bill. So is that what you're saying? When, when you're talking about evaluations, you're saying evaluations of the staff working the program and the program itself?
Yeah, if you want me to be more specific about evaluations of the staff.
Yeah. I would say, I would say program staff evaluations. If that's what that is. Thank you. It looks like you caught what I was looking for.
So I just added another bullet that says provide program staff evaluations.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
It looks good.
And then I added Ashford is an equal opportunity employer at the bottom.
Very good.
You just did that, Cindy?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
And this is going out where?
Um, we have an Apple tracks, um. Account through frontline, so it, it goes out on JobSpot, it's called. It's a K through twelve JobSpot. Um. Which goes out to all kinds of, uh, you know, online.
Wow, good.
It's a good, it, it, we get. We get quite a bit through there.
So what this, this is also saying is, uh, grades one through six?
Yeah, I didn't know. That was one of my questions today is, is it K through six or are we gonna do K through five, one through five?
My understanding Cindy was, uh, K through six.
Okay.
K through.
I, I know somebody brought up K through eight, but I, I haven't at any other school that, that is doing that. And I, I think K through six is more than sufficient.
Yeah, and the, the, the documents that had gotten sent originally, it had one through six on it. So I wasn't sure if. There was a specific reason or if it was just an oversight that K was not involved.
Well, what's, what's your thoughts on K? I mean, is that?
I think K should be involved. I mean, if you, if you've got. You know, if you've got a kid, if you've got a family, you know. Most.
Yeah.
It would span till kindergarten. I mean, some of them would even span to preschool, but because we're just a half-day preschool.
Yeah.
A lot of families already accommodate for the preschool childcare.
And our kindergarten, uh, is full day, right?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
The only other thing I, you know, relating to what Catherine was saying earlier about all-inclusive or anything, I, I, I think your note at the top of the, the second page. The above description is illustrative of tasks and responsibilities and is not meant to be all-inclusive of every task. I. You know, as we fine-tune this and, and realize maybe there are a couple of other duties that we haven't touched, I think that covers that.
Um, yeah, I, um, what we're trying to do is be as clear and precise as we can. And it looks like we've covered a lot. So, nice job.
But I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that ad. Um, I'm gonna assume you're gonna sol- follow the same format on the other two positions, Cindy?
Yes, correct.
Uh, do you think we ought to put it up on the D A S webpage as well? Have you done any of your, when you're hiring for prepared professionals or, or. Or aides or anything? Have you ever used that? Or do you see any need for us to use that?
Uh, I'm not sure. Um, Jen would know more. She's on vacation this week where if, if she's put it on that. I don't think we have. Um. I know we do C T REAP, which is more towards, um, school staff.
Yeah.
Um, so we would definitely be putting it out on C T REAP.
Well, I'm thinking that'd be sufficient. Sherry, you have any thought on that?
No, I don't, Bill.
Melissa? No. Well, I'll follow your lead on that Cindy. If you're comfortable, that gets a broad enough, uh. Um, group that we're appealing to.
Yeah, and somebody reached out to me, I guess, um, someone that has already applied. Uh, reached out this morning to see where she still is interested in the position. So I will, um. You know, have her fill out the application online. Just because it's a good paper trail and it's a good way to make sure all our dot, our, you know, I's are dotted and T's are crossed.
Now, do you have your own application? We, we've just developed a new, uh, brief form of our application. Which one will we be using, Cindy?
Well, it's all on this Apple track. It's a, um, pretty standard what we've used for all, all of our positions.
Your career professionals and. Your prayer professionals and everything is saying, good.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that. Are are you?
Um I just wanted to ask if someone could just send a. A print or a image of what that application looks like so that we can see it because we don't go to K through twelve job spot. I don't even know that I have access to it. So if someone could uh take a moment at some point in time and just take a picture or something and send it. So we can see what's in the application.
Sure.
Since the application is for someone who's going to work for the town. Right? They'll be paid by the town.
I agree. So we're all making sure we're all looking at the same thing, our expectation.
And as as Bill mentioned, uh we recently updated our town job application to make sure that it's in compliance with uh. The types of questions that are appropriate to ask. I'm sure the schools is fine. I'm just curious as to what's in it.
No one could recall when we had last updated our town application, so we sent it off the council. Got it back from them and it's a much briefer, but I I think more in tune with the. Some of the restrictions we run into now.
Right.
Um so Cindy, um are you comfortable then in handling that end of it, putting together if you could send us? When you finish the other two. Um to take a look at, but. Um I'd like to get the word out. I'm I'm thinking that we can put something together for the citizen and say that we are. Our intention is to focus on September first. Um applications will be available um. Through what? Through the school or through the town or? Apples with oranges here.
Yeah, no, it's whatever the link is.
Whatever the link is, Bill.
Whatever communication goes out should always have the link to the job. And I can send that out and make sure you have it. So that any communication that gets out has this link.
Okay.
And and Cindy, to your point, that way we keep. All of the applications are being submitted through the same vehicle and we have a good paper trail of everything.
Correct.
That sounds, I'm afraid I was talking apples and oranges. I my mind went to. People who are going to be, and I think we need part of this discussion today. Of how people are going to apply for their children and what process we're gonna follow on that. Did you have any thoughts on that, Cindy?
I I don't, and I have thought about it. Um. We. Because it's gonna be first come, first served, it's gonna be, it's it's gotta be very much through one. Means. So that it can be documented exactly when things came in.
Right.
Because twenty slots is is just, it's going to fill up quickly.
Yep.
Yeah, so I I think I think we have to make sure that we're we're able to show that we're doing. You know, our best foot forward to to be fair and equal.
So I'm thinking, you know, we've we're looking at a goal of September first.
Yep.
I don't know if that's, I have uh some concerns that it may not be a reasonable goal. Because, one, we have to get the word out. Two, uh about the the job. For applicants to apply. Two, we have to assess the applicants who did apply. Three, we have to interview them. Okay, uh make a decision. And then we also need to communicate to the parents about what the process is to sign up and we've got to be super fair about how we do that. Because it's first in, you know, first come, first served. So I don't think that we can get all of that done by September first. I was I suggest that we make it October first. Only because I suspect we're gonna just be up so up against a wall in terms of getting the word out to the right people. Having the timing, you know, set to be able to interview people for the position and make a decision. And, you know, also to make sure we've got our. Um what am I gonna call it? Uh selection criteria for the. Children, you know, who's who's gonna get in and everything, get that set up properly. And communicated and also. We have to communicate back to the parents who are not going to have, their children are not selected because of timing. So, you know, I hate to, you know, kind of put a pin in the in the balloon, but. I'm just a little concerned because here we are. I'm sorry?
Can I share my thoughts?
On?
Yes. So I'm just thinking that September first is possible. Just because the people that are applying through like C T Reaper Apple tracks are. Used to last minute job postings, you know, these are people that have been looking for jobs or, you know, have started looking for jobs over the summer. So they're constantly looking, their applications might already be started in there. Um and everything is like uploaded, so it's easy, you know, to put your information in there. Um and it would all be. I don't know exactly how the school gets it, but I'm assuming it's like an email or something with all the information. Um so maybe she it would be able to be emailed to whoever is on the interview committee. Um and then if we're only looking at first grade through, I think, what do we say, sixth grade?
Those are kindergarten through six.
Oh, kindergarten, so. The o- only kids that might not be in the school's email system would be those kindergarteners. So you'd still get the information out to almost all of the, you know, through our K twelve system. They those parents would get an email if we were to send something saying, this is the, you know. School after school program, here's how to apply, that sort of thing.
And we'd be telling them what the process is that we're doing selection by, which is first come, first served.
Right. Just as a mom, who, I mean, I don't have kids in daycare anymore, but if I was relying on this and I had to wait a month into school, I think I'd be so overwhelmed. To like scramble for daycare for a month.
I I'd still.
Already scrambled, they already, there there isn't a program in place, so they clearly. Um would be looking at what their daycare would be.
I I'd still like to to shoot for September first. I don't think we're gonna be bombarded. With applications. I think we've got three in. Um I know of two of those three that are still interested in going forward. I haven't spoken. With the third or heard from them, but I have got emails that.
Well, one of them is not qualified.
But I uh I'd still like to go for September first. I don't think it needs to get any more complicated. Than it already is. I think we can get general information. One of the the mechanics that that I'm. I'm not at ease with is on this first come, first served basis. Do we do it?
Me either.
And and I'm looking for suggestions on how we do that. Can we do that through that same link? That you've got, Cindy? Time stamped and date stamped and all of that stuff?
I I uh. For applications, but that that's a totally separate. We're not gonna be collecting um applications for the daycare through that. So. My thought was it's gonna have to be an email, which does this time.
It'll be.
And it's gotta be one email address and I, you know. We could create a very quickly create an after school. Um childcare email address that. I can set up that I see it and whoever else needs to see it right away too. So. That can be done very easily. That's just working with our technology people.
That's a good, that's a good approach. The thing is, is that what we would wanna do is you'd wanna put it out through what you have as a vehicle at the school to get information out to parents. You'd also wanna put it in the Ashford Citizen and say, here's the email address to use.
Yes, and I think we can get that out by. Um the twentieth. I I think we could.
Excellent.
Okay, cuz today's the seventeenth.
Yeah, the the email literally takes, it'll take them five minutes to create it.
But we have to have us to write up for the citizen too.
Right. Bill, had you had one?
Okay, Cindy.
Had one been created originally?
No, not for people to apply.
I did a a very quick blurb last month, but it didn't have any of the process for application or whatever. It did say that we had a. Uh a focus date that we were trying to meet of September first. And that the school and the town had partnered on this to to go forward with it. I can drive, try to draft something up and then send everybody. Cindy, perhaps you and I can work on it. I guess the critical part, well, one of the critical parts is getting the email address. And then say, pick a date. Um August fifteenth or something like that. That. That when when will the clock start on the first come, first served basis?
The day we open, the day we say applications will be accepted. Um and I I would, I would, sorry, I would think something along the lines of like August first.
Okay.
Or no, cuz that's when they get the citizen.
Citizen.
So August, starting it, opening it as August second for applicants.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay.
And then emails can start coming in. You know, we need to explain that. They need to let us know. It's not just I'm interested. Um. You know, I did see in one of the handbooks that they had people come in in person. To fill out the application. I mean, we could do something like that so that. I know it puts a little extra pressure on people, but. You know. I don't know. I don't know what the best way, because I mean, we're we're hearing there's up upwards of eighty kids that need this.
Right.
And so. You know, I certainly don't wanna fight with people. While they're standing in line because we've already hit the cutoff.
When the twenty first person gets there.
He, yeah.
So you could, the alternative is to use a lottery system.
How does that work?
Don't know, Red Ryder. Um I just know that, you know, that certainly for different schools, I know down, you know, where my grandchildren live that. They use a lottery system for some of them.
I mean, could it literally be old school? Like if people apply, would put your name in a hat and like?
It could be, it could be as, you know, manual as that. The uh.
You know. Catherine, that's probably the better way of doing it.
Uh the only reason I mention that is because this is all about managing the parents' expectations. They have to make plans around this. You know, whether they're accepted or not. So we also have to make sure that they know as quickly as possible. Whether or not they've been accepted, like uh Melinda was, Melissa was saying is that, you know, they need to make arrangements if they're not accepted for their children for other childcare. Now granted, these these parents have been getting childcare or working around whatever they had to work around. Up until this point. It's not a new problem for them.
Can I make a suggestion?
We're gonna handle where we have, and I and I know one of the biggest proponents of this haven't had three children. How are we gonna address the issue if a family has three children?
Well, I would think. That when you're going into a lottery system, everybody knows that it's the family is going into the lottery system.
Right.
Cause you can't, you can't provide for one child in that family and not the others.
Bill, you happen to know of those children, uh I don't know what was explained to folks, but um. Uh if they have a seventh or an eighth grader. That's not gonna be a kid that's uh uh able to go into the program.
Yeah.
So depending on how many kids they have between whatever ages. Agrees, I should say.
The lady that sent something on, her name escapes me right now, but she was the one that I forwarded to everybody that had a list of.
Yeah.
Over eighty children, where she had three children, but I didn't get into specifics with anybody that's called us about what we're talking about. Cuz I thought that was premature.
Well, what we did do was we had that ad that said if you were interested to contact the selectman's office and gave the email for that, so my assumption was. Everybody that you've received an email from the other selectmen have seen, and I thought we only had. Four, maybe five parents so far. Um that one person who had collected all of the names and whatever. Uh in her spreadsheet, there were a number of people who were saying they were interested. There were other people who were saying yes. Um and there were some that were saying, I only need it for this time to this time.
Well, that that was another thing I was gonna ask. I mean, I. So what we're talking about here is that we're gonna go with a lottery. We're gonna figure out the method of that lottery. Whether it be draw from a hat or how we're gonna do that, and it it will be, if I can just finish. It will be by family, not by student.
Absolutely. And when we do it by family, you know, as we draw the names, we just have a count of how many kids are in that family. Yeah.
And and. Do we limit that to full time use first? With five day, cuz I know some of those families on that.
Yeah.
Graph that I sent out, we're only looking for two day coverage. And I think the idea of this is to go with five day. Um and then if we have any excess left over, which I think we all know we're not gonna have any. Uh then we'll consider where we go from there.
Uh I would, I would think that would be a way to do it. You you wanna make sure that the program is self sustaining and part of that is making it five day.
Yeah, and I would say that. Whether you need a halftime or full time, you're paying for the full time. We. That's.
Well, that's one of the things that when I talk to the uh. Gentleman from Stafford Springs who's been running this for ten years or whatever. I asked them, I asked him if somebody is absent or they're sick and he says, no, they pay in advance. They pay in a month in advance. Now, the one difference with Stafford that we noticed, and I think Cindy, you picked up on it on. Some of the information we sent out was they're primarily subsidized by the state. And I I I think their tuition, well, and the first one was four dollars. I noticed in the last one, he said it's six dollars a day. Um I mean, we can look into that. I don't, I think it's premature right now. We gotta go with a hundred dollars a week per student. Um and then discuss also in Stafford, if there was a multifamily. Um the second and third child or whatever was done at a fifty percent rate. Is that something that we wanna think about?
Wouldn't do that.
I think not in the beginning. I think that. I I mean, I know that there's grants that I can get also because it's through the school.
Yeah.
I and I definitely plan on applying for them, but. The way the the e-grants is started to work is you have to upfront it anyway. In order to, so anything that I apply for will just go towards this.
Um so what we have then is the situation, if a family, uh as Bill mentioned, there was one person in particular. Who's been, you know, dogging this one. Um who has three kids, so that's three hundred dollars a week. Do, does anybody know what the going rate is for childcare? Roughly?
I I can't put my finger on a rate, but I've had the impression from people that I've talked to is if it's accessible, it's a lot more than that.
That's what I thought. Okay, so I'm just making sure that we're not outrageous. You know, what we're charging.
Frankly, we're, I I was hoping we could keep it at seventy five dollars. But uh Dave Roston was the one who was most comfortable with starting off at a hundred. Then rebid, if we could reduce it, we'd reduce it if, you know, uh we're satisfied that. The operation could be run for less.
At a later date.
Yeah.
The um. Oh, sorry, lost my train of thought.
No problem. So it's a hundred percent. Whether it's for one child or three. Um we're gonna only offer it for five day um full time. Participation of it. We're going to do a lottery.
By family.
By family.
Um and I was thinking payments could be due on the first Tuesday of every month.
Uh can I, that's what the the next thing I wanted to ask about. You know, I've seen the different write ups and everything and we have, we actually contradict ourselves in the write ups we have. We have one where it's due. Uh weekly. And then there's another one where it says it's due on. I don't know, whatever day of.
One of them says the first of each month. I think Stanford is uh Stafford does that.
So I was talking about what we had in our our write up. The thing is. So I was talking about what we had in our, our write up. The thing is. You can have them do on the first. Of the month that the child is going to be in the program. Or, uh, yes, Sherry. You waving your hand? Oh, that's a bug.
Kind of fly.
Sorry.
The, yeah, that's okay. The, um. But if we're having them do them in advance of the month. I would suggest it would be by the fifteenth of the preceding month.
Okay.
That way you have time for checks to clear, whatever, or you know, something where. You know, and they they are due on that date. I'm trying to think about, you know, the, the trouble of, you know, when we're taking in the monies. And making sure that it's been paid for and no, we won't turn away a child or the check bounces.
Right.
We'll work it out somehow. But just trying to make it so that it manages to people's expectations. Um, Cynthia, Cindy, what do you think?
Yeah, I think the fifteenth is a good idea that I think a lot of it putting a, a date like that, um, that first, obviously, that first month is going to be. Um, as you know.
Right.
Due upon. When you're accepted into your program.
Yeah.
Um.
What about a family that would really struggle, like if they had like two kids, that's eight hundred dollars a month, um, doing that in a lump sum the first time? I think might be hard for some families.
I was, uh.
Like if you're not well off and you struggle week to week to make ends meet, and you have to pay eight hundred dollars for your two children to go to daycare, like in one lump.
Then I would expect them to come to, I, I would like them to come to you. Do we have any funds? Available to help? Families?
You, I'm just saying that first time when you haven't had maybe like time to save. Your weekly.
Well, if they're already paying for childcare.
Just donate.
I understand what you're saying about the first month. Part of the thing with the fifteenth is many times rent or, uh, mortgages are due on the first of the month.
How about if we put in there, when we put the ad out there, it says, um, you know, due on the fifteenth of the month. The first check will be due upon acceptance of enrollment in the program. Um, reach out. For additional information. Uh, to our youth services. Or the, you know, superintendent of schools or something like that. So that we work out something with individual families if we had to.
That's fine. I was just, you know, imagining someone who's like having grandma watch kids for the summer and really is putting money aside for daycare and then has this eight hundred dollar bill that's not. Normal.
Melissa, that's, Melissa, that's a very good point. I know because I've been there. I've lived that.
So. If I'm that person Melissa is talking about. And I don't have that eight hundred dollars. We're gonna refer them to Melissa. For possible assistance. Would that be the plan?
I think that's fine, and if they're able, I mean, they have to prove that they can financially pay for it going forward.
Right. And Melissa, you can work with them on that. To, you know, kind of work through that with them.
Right, and if I get the grant through the state.
Right.
Then we'll be able to have money.
Who assists?
Subsidize, subsidize.
Yeah.
And Bill, I'll be suggesting based upon what we have for American Rescue Plan funds. Um, once we kind of get more of a final count on what we have. Um, is that we set aside some money for this. Uh, just to, you know, protect some of those parents.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Sherry, along the lines of what we're talking about. How does Sterling or Brooklyn? Deal with families that are in hardship situations where they're.
Brooklyn, we have, we have, um, a scholarship fund that, uh, our rec department, uh, solicits. Donations from area businesses and that, and it's set aside and it is used for. Uh, families that do have hardships. Uh, here in Sterling, we've also have done the same thing. Um, Brooklyn, I know, you know, takes payment in advance. Um. And here, uh. You know, a month in advance, and then here in Sterling, we have some that do month in advance, and we do have some that are weekly. As long as the family is, you know, contact somebody to let that, you know, let somebody know that. You know, financial assistance or. Or, you know, they have a little bit of a hardship, you can always work with families as long as you know upfront.
Yeah.
Melissa, what about Lions money?
So that's supposed to be used for recreation. I don't think we can use it for this.
Okay.
I can ask them though.
So I'm reading out a killing lease and they say, um. If, if you need a payment plan or experiencing a hardship, please see. And it, it leaves a name.
So Melissa, would it be okay if we give that name or your name?
Of course.
You're, you're comfortable with that because I know you have a lot on your platter.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay, I like that.
Okay, so we've got, I think what I'm hearing is we've got consensus on. Payments. Besides the initial payment upon registration. Which will be a month in advance.
It'll be on the fifteenth.
Payments will be as of the fifteenth. Of the previous month.
Yep.
Now, who is, who's gonna be responsible for collecting those checks? Where is that gonna happen?
That's gonna have to be that lead person.
Right, that's in their job description.
Okay, that's kind of what I.
This is a shall receive, shall receive checks on Friday from the parents for the following week. I think that needs to be changed.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, good point.
So you'll, you'll fine tune that Cindy?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna use a lottery system.
And the lottery system, the way it should be done. Is at some point we have to have a cutoff date because that's when you do your selection. So. It would be, uh, for them to apply between this August second and. I don't know. August twentieth. Something like that.
I think we need to give ourselves a little more time than that.
Well, the reason I say that is because, but Bill, the reason I say that is because when we go to run the lottery. Was to tell the people that their kids are going to be in the program for September first.
Yeah, I would.
Sooner the better.
Yeah, I was thinking this timeline, um. I was thinking two weeks from the second.
Right. Oh, so that's, uh, like the fifteenth?
To the fifteenth, and then that gives us time to do, run the lottery and then give. Notice by, you know, I'm, I'm thinking we need the, the lottery time isn't going to take that long, a week to do that.
Yep.
And then be able to give notification to families by that.
So the two weeks from the second is the sixteenth.
Yep.
That's a Wednesday.
And then a week after that, if we're giving notification. Um, by the twenty third. With a start date of September first.
So by the twenty third. Payment will have had to be made?
Yep.
Will already have the registration form when they, when they submit for the lottery.
Yeah.
The lottery will be chosen, are, are we gonna do this out of a hat?
We can. You know what? Not a bad idea. A hat or a bucket.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, or so, some sort of a container.
They're snazzy.
Some kind of enclosed container and everybody's slip or whatever is the same size and shape and folded the same way.
And, and we're gonna go to Sherry Susie's off, office in Sterling and pick them out from there. No, I'm kidding.
No, but we should have, uh, we should have a couple, at least a couple of us present for that.
Yep.
Well, I mean, if Cindy's comfortable with it, well, we could either do it here at the selectman's office or we could do it at the school. I kind of. Feel it be might be more appropriate at the school.
Yeah, there's handy dandy, uh, apps you can use too.
What's the handy dandy? Yeah.
There's, you can put, uh, you know, you can go on and put names into, uh. A computer thing and it'll generate.
The tags.
It'll generate tags, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's easy. You could do that in Excel. Um, okay, good.
And then we pull it out of this container, but where would we do that? Would we do that on the sixteenth? Pulling the names?
Well, they have to have them in by the sixteenth, so I would do it on the, well, the next day the town offices are closed.
We can do it on that Friday, the eighteenth.
I think the eighteenth is good. And that way we've got all the slips in the bucket or whatever. And then, uh, I would say that we would pretty much immediately send out the notices to the people who were. Uh, as quickly as possible, get them out by that Monday. That following Monday. To people who were selected and people who were not. And as part of that, we would have the names of the children. In the notification. And I can help with whatever that is.
Those would be on the, on the registration form that they're going to be submitting between the.
Oh, yeah, it has to be.
Sixteen. We need all the conf, contacted phone numbers, cell numbers, email addresses.
That all, that all gets done on their application.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, in terms of the manual labor around, you know, doing any of that, I'm more than willing to help with that. Over that weekend. So I do have computer skills, so. A few, thirty eight years in IT. So.
And yes, you have some skills.
A few.
All right, what? What? Sherry, I asked Sherry to join us. We were at the Board of Finance meeting. Um, last Thursday, gave them a heads up of what we had in mind. They seem receptive, although. Nobody had a lot to say, but they seemed receptive to what we presented to them. What I've asked Sherry to do is kind to draw. Line items that we can use as a basis. That we need to cover and, and. Catherine, what I was assuming, and we haven't discussed it as a board yet. We would set this up as a separate department.
Yes, absolutely.
With, with revenues and expenditures, and I've asked.
Right.
Sherry to try to draft up. Um, a draft of how that will, uh. Be made up.
And Sherry, that's your recommendation, correct?
Yes.
Excellent.
So I think we've covered that base. I told the Board of Finance. That at least by their next month's meeting. We anticipated everything being. Uh, set up as to form and that, and that we'd give them a heads up. And again, although it was a fairly quiet crowd there that night. Um, I believe they were receptive to it.
Sorry, it's usually quiet.
Um, is there anything else? Melissa, anything we're not catching here that? The only other thing I was thinking, and, and I have no idea if we can do this or whether it's just. High in the sky. Saying we're gonna have. Fifty disappointed families. Is there any sort of referral system? Melissa, I know we were, we're told we only have two certified daycare centers. In town. Is there a, a state list of certified? Daycare centers, say in.
It's on two one one.
Sorry?
Two one one hosts the, um, Connecticut daycares.
Really?
Yeah.
So you go up and dial two one one?
Or go to their website.
Hey, so, um, with that, how successful are people using that?
So we, in Ashford, because there's only two or three, if you need after school care, it's, you know, not so helpful. But if you have little ones, obvious, it would be more helpful.
Yeah.
Now with that, that would let us know about a budding towns and that.
Yeah, it's the entire state of Connecticut. You put in your zip code and you can like, you know, filter it by what you're looking for, like infant care or after school care. Um, and it will give you a list.
So we should be, we should also. Find a way to get that information out in the citizen at some point. So that, um, people know that there's, they have, you know. If they don't already know about it. That, um, that is an option for them to look at.
Draw, uh, draft this up just a, a quick paragraph, a little blurb on that.
Oh, sure.
That would be good.
Is there anything else? Cindy, I'll try to. Draft up just an outline for, for the article for the citizen for the twentieth. I'll send it, I'll send it to everybody, but I'll send it to you for tweaking. And maybe you and I can coordinate that.
All right, so based on all of this, it sounds like we could make a September date, but it's gonna be tight.
Yeah, it'll be tight. I'm also, I, I think I'm gonna attempt to make a Google form. What do you guys think if I made it? The, the application of Google form, do you think that's too? Difficult?
I, I can tell you, yeah, I can tell you, believe it or not, I don't use Go, Google. I don't use Google in that fashion. I don't know if a lot of other people do. Uh, maybe they do. I'm also thinking about, there's some parents. I don't. Is there any chance that we have parents that? Like don't use a computer?
Yes.
At all?
No, if they don't have a computer, they use their.
These days.
What was that, Melissa?
I found all families use their smartphones who don't have access to computers.
So if they're using their smartphone. Cindy, what's the? What's the, uh? What are the limitations they would have in filling out a form via their smartphone? If it was a Google form?
It, it should, it, it would work through, through a smartphone.
Yeah, I was gonna say for E O Smith, all of my kids' stuff comes through Google Forms now. Like whatever, Field Trip or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a good way to be able to, to keep. Documentation of what's coming in. So, so things don't get lost in the shuffle.
No, I, I love audit trails.
Yeah, and it's, it's quicker. People can get their application in quicker.
Yeah. So what's gonna happen is as soon as. One person, especially any of the four people who are pretty lively about this and, and more assertive in trying to get this going forward. Um, as soon as they. Hear about it, put their kids' names in or whatever, they're gonna contact their friends. And say, hey. You know, you need to go on there and do that. Will we have anything out on our town website, Bill? Or is it, oh wait, we're doing it all through one thing. To keep it uniform, correct?
Well, as long as the link to the Google form is part of that communication, it should work.
Okay. Good.
Um, can you give me something Cindy outlining the Google form and we can get it on the webpage?
Yep.
We'll also get it on our Facebook site.
Yes, they're just links that you click on.
Okay.
So based upon this. They, do we need an? The, with the Google form, does it have to, does it go through an email? Gets it get attached to an email or does it, is it just a Google form direct? You could go out and look at it.
They would hit the link and it would go right to the Google form.
Okay, so what we don't need is we don't need the special email box. Is that correct?
Well, the email box, I think is a good thing to have for the after school care. Just so that in case we have changeover of staff.
Right.
That email always remains the same.
Not only that, it might be an opportunity for parents to provide feedback. On the program. Okay.
It's a little less personal, it, you know, so it's not an individual person is being, you know, is the decision maker.
Right. Right. And we would make sure that, uh, that the superintendent and the first selectman would have access to that email.
Yeah, I started as just Jen and I because I have to talk to Savage to see if Bill can be part of it because he's outside of the Ashford C T org. All right. So I will talk to them to make sure that. And if he can't be, I will forward absolutely everything I get. To Bill.
The form that I'm going to fill out to register my child. We haven't finished that up yet. We haven't developed that. We haven't finished that up yet. We haven't developed that, have we?
No, I'm gonna go off of, I, I know that. One of these that you sent to me.
Yeah.
Um, actually uses an online Google form, so I'm gonna. I'm gonna make it my own.
So you'll, you'll do that?
At a girl. And then what we need to do is we'll need to focus on the parent's handbook. Once we get some of these other things in place, because those parents need to understand these are what the rules are.
Absolutely.
And I think.
Biggest, the biggest thing that they're gonna need to completely understand is that late, late pickup.
Yeah. And how is that gonna work roughly?
It looks like a lot of, of, all the programs, uh, charge. According to the amount of time that they're late and then so many late's. Pickups. Equals discontinued service.
Good. And that'll be in the handbook.
That'll all be in the handbook.
And the other thing is, um. For, uh, late pickup, we would have, how many of our staff there? Just one?
Well, the, the lead person would be the one that would need to stay.
Okay.
Or, or assign it.
We have, we have to have the right lead.
Has the amount of what we're paying? Been decided?
Well, what we had talked about was comparable to what your para professionals are getting per hour.
For the lead person?
For the lead person.
What about the others?
That had been yet determined, but you know, something a bit less than that. If you thought that the lead person should get a, a couple of dollars more than that. Than her.
You haven't. Yeah. Sorry. Do you have any recommendations, Cindy?
Well, I definitely, the lead person. I would think would be a couple more than the para.
Yeah.
Para's are roughly at what, twenty-three dollars an hour now?
I'm looking at that right now. Cause it is a lot of responsibility. I was honestly thinking about twenty-five.
I think that's good. Bill, you know how that.
The next one down, the, the, the assistant. I would think would be equal to a para pay. But the helper could be. In between. Minimum wage and. The assistant. That's kind of what I was thinking. I could be.
So the helper would be something like twenty dollars an hour?
Did you, did you see what your paras are? Cindy, do you, is it twenty-three? I thought I remembered twenty-three and change.
Our paras are currently. Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
I gave him a raise.
So twenty-two. For the paras, for someone who is.
For the assistant.
Lead assistant, twenty-five for the lead. And what, uh, twenty or eighteen for the? Helper?
How about if we do like a range eighteen to twenty depending on experience?
I like that too. And I think what we should do is. If at all possible, find a way to make sure we have backups. Available.
Yep.
Uh, particularly as helpers. I suspect.
Yeah. And, you know, I don't, this might be a discussion for another day, but. Eventually, are we gonna look to put this into one of our, the contracts? Or is this always gonna remain kind of as a separate entity?
You mean one.
When you say contracts, you're one of the union contracts.
Yeah.
Are we gonna keep this separate?
I, my preference would be to keep it separate at this time.
Yep.
Keep that when we do our, our evaluations down the road. You know, see what's being presented to us.
Okay.
There's gonna be no benefits with this. This is. Less, less than thirties, it's straight hourly payment.
Just in case I got asked any questions, I just wanted to be able to.
Yeah.
Answer it.
Yeah, I agree with that as well.
And I think your council and our council said that we could do it that way.
Yes, we can.
It'll be separate from union contract.
And the thing is, it's a separate program, so.
Yep.
And a separate department within the town, I mean.
Right, it keeps it clean.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I think we got an awful lot accomplished today. Is there anything else that?
Me too.
And I think we've got. Some homework for us to do, but, um. I really appreciate all the work all of you have done on this and.
I think it's amazing.
Absolutely. Anything else? Um, do we wanna schedule, uh, next Monday, same time, same place?
Yep.
Same bat channel.
Eleven thirty next Monday.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, folks. Chris, if you'll arrange that on Zoom. Also.
Sure. Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Thank you, folks. Have a good day.
Nice job. Enjoy.
Bye bye, thank you.
Are you out?
I'm trying. I don't know why it's not letting me in.